We're in full force quorum this morning. Would you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, George Studer, for filling in today.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we look to you for all things. This morning, we woke up, and we have another opportunity to live a right life and make decisions that can be honoring to you. One more chance to live a right life and to make decisions that will be helpful to others, not just ourselves. We want to thank you, Lord, for our health and the miracles you do for our lives, but also we thank you for giving us hope for our community. And you are our hope. So we pray your blessing on this meeting and help each to respect the thoughts and the heart of each other and come up with good solutions for us in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I understand we do not have any ceremonial matters, proclamations, or employee recognitions today. So we'll go to number five, council comments.
Mayor, I have two. I attended the airport advisory board yesterday. Key hangar occupancy is at 100% with 32 on the waitlist. Everybody mark your calendar for December the 16th. That is the Santa Fly-In at the airport. Also, there's three big hangars being built at the hangar at the airport right now. Two of them are owned by the FBO. The hangars are 110 foot square with a door opening of 100 by 28 feet. So that's for the big jets to park. And fuel sales are improving, and they estimate by year end, they should be around 500,000 gallons for the year. Some of that is due to the firefighters that are stationed here. But that slowed down thankfully because we haven't had that many fires lately. So anyway, that's a report on the airport. I was going by City Hall yesterday, and Sam Sagabill stopped me, and he wanted to sing high praises for Jennifer Krupa. He said, she's great to work with. Her willingness to help is amazing. She's just a pleasure and for us not to let her go. So, good job, Jennifer. That's all I have.
So I'll jump in as well and echo some of council member Bobby's comments. Andrew and the entire Parks team, I just want to call you out. Thank you for your professionalism and your hard work. We had a very, very busy Oktoberfest. I believe the head count was 27,000 last year and 34,000 this year. And the amount of effort and work to get it ready for the next event, which came up very quickly, was nothing short of miraculous, in my opinion. So thank you so much for your professionalism. And lastly, just sincere thanks to our city staff for ushering a new council member through the Texas Municipal League, made a number of new connections there. The one common theme I heard over and over from neighboring towns and even towns up here in Morello were, you're from Fredericksburg, we want to be just like you. And so while we face challenges, we face difficult things that we discuss and try to resolve, we are the envy of our neighbors. And I think it's something worth reflecting on. So, thank you.
Just one note. We had a town hall last week at the Pioneer Museum and had three different areas represented. Turnout was a little bit lower than I had expected, but it was good quality conversation. And I just wanted to put a plug in. This is a great chance to get to visit about things not on any sort of agenda. You can ask any question you like. Our next town hall is on the 26th of October, 6 o'clock at the Presbyterian Church. Areas are four and 11, but you can come if you're a resident of the town.
All right. Thank you. Item number six is consent agenda with one item is to consider the approval of the October 3 minutes. I'll move to approve. Second, motion in second to approve the minutes as presented. On paper, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. As we get to item seven ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings, expect that the item A with regard to the zoning municipal ordinances will take a little time. So I'd like to go ahead and jump to C to consider the approval, because I know we have some people here on behalf of this. Resolution 2023-16R supporting the innovative one water strategies and directing staff to explore such strategies in private development projects. So Emily or Bobby, do you want to speak to this or both?
Sure. I don't have any prepared remarks. I'd love if we could read this because it's full of great information. But this is the result of a lot of what we've learned at the Hill Country Alliance Leadership Institute and showing the good groundwork our city has already laid in terms of water infrastructure, but then looking to the future. As we are in a sustained drought, how can we be more nimble with our water use? Yes, conserving is great, but also how can we reuse AC condensate, catch rainwater, be innovative with the grasses that we're growing in our yards, all of that. So this is a, I don't want to take anything from the resolution. This is just a hope that our staff and developers and residents can all work together to do better with water.
All right, the
Oh, sorry. Cliff Kaplan is here from Hill Country Alliance. He's the brains of the organization. And he has helped us a ton, Clint and I, over the past year as we've been a part of the leadership cohort. And I guess I'll say this now, Bobby and Garrett are going to be a part of the second cohort. And we are really excited about that because we can build on the strength of the program already. I don't know, Clint, if you wanted to say anything on that.
It's a great program, great, great speakers throughout, wonderful group with Hill Country Alliance running the entire program. We've made a lot of connections. We've learned a lot, a lot that applies directly to what we do here in Fredericksburg. A lot of very similar challenges with all of the communities across the Hill Country.
All right, any other comments? Ready to move it?
Sure. I move that we approve resolution 2023-16R.
Second, motion to approval to, motion in second to approve resolution 2023-16R supporting these innovative one water strategies. Any further questions, discussions? On paper, the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Emily and Bobby for bringing that up. Council, I'm going to ask your opinion here. The discussion and consideration of the proposed amendments on the zoning ordinance is the meat of this meeting in terms of the time investment. Would you be all right if we handled the other items in eight prior to that?
Yes.
For the sake of these people who are here on behalf of their issue, and I think they'll move pretty quickly because there are recommendations by staff on these. They've been before P and Z. But let's go ahead and do, Chris, if you're ready to talk to us about item B, consider the approval of ordinance 2023-19 amending the schedule for outdoor irrigation under stage four.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, Council. This is an item, I guess to start off, we've been in stage four water conservation since April of this year due to the, as Emily mentioned, sustained drought the last few years. This is an item that we've heard a number of different times from at coffee with the city manager, at town halls, from our citizens, our residents, and so forth, about the stage four watering times. Currently, the ordinance states that those watering times are in the evening from 7:00 to 11:00. With the change in the seasons that we're currently going through, with the daylight hours becoming much darker in the evenings now, we are proposing to look and move those watering times under stage four to the morning hours in lieu of the evening hours. Currently, we're proposing to change those watering times from 5:00 to 9:00 in the morning. There has been some discussion about possibly changing that just a little bit, maybe not 5:00 to 9:00, but 6:00 to 10:00, and then possibly looking at the overall water conservation ordinance next spring, possibly doing something similar. So it's really easy to remember both evening and morning. And what I mean by that is changing from 6:00 to 10:00 possibly in the morning and in the evening so that there's not a, you know, confusion between the morning and the evening hour. So we're open for discussion on that. We would definitely support that 6:00 to 10:00 if that's what council's flavor might be there. So be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Become effective if we approved it today?
I would recommend that we give a little bit of time to do a, you know, bill stuffer because this is a change, I would say maybe 30 days, something like that.
So, Chris, we spoke briefly yesterday, but just to clarify, probably the most common comment I've received in the past was, you know, I work early in the morning. It's difficult for me to, we can still hand water, and we can still use sulfur hoses on gardens and things of that nature so we don't harm the individual that gets up early in the morning to work, correct?
That's right. Yes, sir. The sulfur hose is hand watering with a positive cut-off nozzle. Those are still provisions in the ordinance that would be allowed.
Boy, the 30 days. So I guess we'll have a mix. Some people watering in the morning and some in the evening.
We understand that. Yes, sir. But we just need to get that word out, paper, probably do a bill stuffer, obviously on the website. Just again, reach out to those licensed irrigators so they can help reprogram their customers' irrigation systems, all that stuff.
Chris, I want to make sure I'm understanding. So you could hand water from, you could do it both morning or evening, right? On stage four?
That's correct.
So with this recommended change, it would just be in the morning? Or would you still allow for evening for hand watering?
It would still be allowed in the evening.
Okay. But then the, if you're using a sprinkler, that would have to be just in the morning?
Yes, ma'am.
On your day. Okay. The one thing that I saw on the ordinance was, it looks like, and maybe I just, my computer looks weird, but the I needs to be a one and a zero, and an O needs to be a zero on the amendment.
Yeah, I see that. Yes, ma'am. Those are, yeah, under the last digit of every address. Is that correct?
Yes, that's where it is. A should be a one and E should be a zero. And I like the idea of 6:00 to 10:00 morning or night. I think that helps a lot.
Seems to me because if you have an automatic system, you can set at any time, but 6:00 to 10:00 would seem to accommodate people with that set sprinklers. And that's sort of, I know it is at my house, but 6:00 to that hour does kind of make a difference. So the issue before us is to amend only the schedule.
I mean, currently, our watering times are from 7:00 to 11:00. So this ordinance would revise to the morning. But if council's appetite would be to change, what we currently have is 5:00 to 9:00. If y'all would like to change that to 6:00 to 10:00, I'd just like to have y'all put that in the motion so that the ordinance is reflective of those.
So the change would be from 6:00 to 9:00?
6:00 to 10:00.
6:00 to 10:00.
Moving it from what's currently the evening to 6:00 to 10:00 in the morning.
Still be a total of four hours.
So I know you probably all got a number of different voices on this. I'm very, I'm thinking forget about the individual heading work in the morning and so forth. So I would propose a motion to 6:00 to 10:00.
Have motion second.
I'm sorry, we might need to revise that a little bit because we also need to change the ordinance to be 6:00 to 10:00 PM for hand water. Correct? Because it, right now, it's 7:00 to 11:00 PM, and it's not on this part of the ordinance.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't bring the whole ordinance, but I think in your motion, obviously, if y'all make that motion, people change, make that change in the ordinance. Ultimately, we want to, so that it's not confusing to everybody, have it 6:00 to 10:00 in the morning and 6:00 to 10:00 in the evening. You can make that motion. We can make those changes in the ordinance across the board under all water stages. That way, it's not confusing. I think that probably would be the best way.
So I would then amend my motion to adjust the watering times to 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM for automatic sprinkling systems and watering 6:00 AMs to 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Does that suffice? Your second. Our council would clear the motion. Altering the watering times 6:00 to 10:00, but also hand watering 6:00 to 10:00 PM. All right. On paper, that motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. So you'll do the 30-day education process.
That's right. Yes, sir.
So when will it be effective? So can I start watering at 6:00 PM or no?
I think it's effective upon y'all's adoption this morning, but we'll allow 30 days to, you know, educate and reach out to those groups.
All right, council, any other comments? Okay. On seven, G, if you are here to consider a public hearing on considering the request on that CUP to operate a restaurant at 811 North Alano, the applicant has requested that that be pulled from the agenda today. So that will not be discussed if that's why you're here. And for no other reason than you may want to get about your day. So let's go to D, consider a request by Amelia Zesch for a CUP to operate a SGR in R2 zoned area located in the historical district on property located at 407 West San Antonio Street. I see that applicant is here. Would you like to make a presentation?
Good morning. I am not Amelia Zesch. I am her spokesman, Scott Zesch. Thank you, Mayor and city council members for considering our application. I'd also like to thank Shelby and Jan with the city office for the information they provided to us. Amelia and I are co-owners of Flagstone Sunday House. The agenda memo provides a good summary, so I'll be very brief. Flagstone is a historical Sunday house located on San Antonio Street between Edison and Mylum. Mylum. The adjacent properties on each side of us are STRs, as are some of the houses across the street. Flagstone operated as an STR for approximately 16 years. During that time, there were no complaints to the city, and all hot taxes have been paid through 2023. We stopped taking guests during the worst of COVID in 2020, and later that year into 2021, we reopened on a more limited basis. During that time period, our permit lapsed because, quite frankly, we forgot it was time for renewal. The city notified us of the violation in August, and we stopped taking new reservations. So we are now applying for a new conditional use permit to resume operations. Thank you.
Anna?
I have a quick question, if you mind, sir. Did you ever receive notice from the city that your permit was due to expire in a period of time, or was there any notification at all?
No, no, we did not. You know, we had always renewed it in the past, but we did not know it was up for renewal.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Mr. Zesch, I think that was a good summary of where we are, the situation. It was a long-time operating STR in the historic district with no issues. The 2022 ordinance changed, though, required that this get a CUP or essentially a new permit. So planning and zoning, recommended approval, and staff is recommending approval. We can go through some of the details, but this is a small historic structure on a large lot, there's ample parking, and permits, application's been paid, and hot has been paid. We will require a new inspection, but as we see it, staff recommends approval.
Let's go into public hearing on this.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to go from regular to public hearing on Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Anyone here to speak on this issue? All right.
I move we go back and do regular session.
Second. Motion second to go back into regular session on a fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right. Questions, comments, counsel?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion and second to approve this. Any further discussion questions on the motion?
Do we need to have any conditional use permit criteria? Is it special, or is it just a simple approval?
So it was just a simple approval, there was nothing special.
On favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 70 is consider a request by William Joseph for a CUP to operate a STR unoccupied in an R2 zoned area located in historic overlay district, property located at 411 East Creek. Mr. Joseph?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's Bill Joseph, I'm here to discuss with briefly our residents in Portland East Creek Street. This is an historic building. It is now in the historic overlay, which was of relatively recent age. It is a stone house, it's Longrehan's homestead, which we very lovingly restored to absurd extremes some 16 years ago. It's been on permanent assistance for the time that the structure, which is approaching 18 years. Our neighborhood has changed. We have three STRs across the street, we have an STR at a 45-degree angle across Creek Street. If you go around the curve, you've got an STR development, which has 10 or 12, some number in double digits, I meant to count it, we're coming here this morning, I can do so, I apologize for that. The neighborhood has changed, and simultaneously, we have gotten old. My spouse is Dutch, we have most of her family, Netherlands, we were looking at this time of our lives to spend more time with them, because shockingly, they got old along with Therefore, this is what I would consider and what I presented to planning and zoning as essentially a defensive application. It is our intention to maintain this home as our permanent residence, but it is also our necessity to be absent for extended periods in detention. So on that basis, we would respectfully submit to you that this would be an appropriate item for your consideration, certainly having any further questions that you might have.
Bill, this is a curiosity question, it's really not relevant to my voting.
Yes, sir.
What's your plan for managing while y'all are in the Netherlands?
Mr. Mayor, Gerald, we are going to, and this is all for us, and I don't want to overemphasize that, but rather I want the motion, the application obviously is standard in this area, we would use a management company. Now, we have a very close friend who's in that business, that is a very trusted individual of, oh gosh, probably about the same duration as we've been in Fredericksburg, so it's approaching 20-year duration. I'm too old to manage anybody, and too grumpy, so that would be the only intelligent thing to do. And he's very well versed in it, he's been doing it for years, Jerry Mark, obviously, a long time, a long time. The house will cede, it has three bedrooms, it's on 1.38 acres, it's lovely, somebody who's seen, it's a lovely property. The outbuilding is about another, oh, six or seven under square feet, four or four miles, it's a nice one, we love it.
Any other questions to the applicant?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anna?
Thank you, Bill, for the summary. So like the last one, this is a CUP in the historic district, this is also for a facility, since they are requesting to use two units. It's 411 East Creek, if you're familiar with the area, Elk Street and Creek, and this kind of dead ends down by the creek, so it's a pretty quiet portion of the neighborhood that has definitely transitioned to heavy short-term rental use. So this does a but, commercially zoned property, and the property is the site of the original Longrehan's homestead and consists of two units and a pavilion. The main residence is 4,000 square feet, consisting of two bedrooms, and the guest house is a single-story 728 square foot building with one bedroom. The property has frontage on East Creek that takes access off of South Creek, Elk Street, via a 35-foot wide driveway, and is located in the neighborhood that has a high volume of STRs. Within 200 feet of the property, there are a total of 20 parcels, those 20 parcels contain five vacant lots, one hotel, seven STRs resulting, and 53% of the developed notified area operating as a hotel or STR. Public notification, including letters sent by, sent to property owners within 200 feet, resulted in one letter of support. So the occupancy of the main house would be six, and the occupancy for the guest house would be four, for combined occupancy of the facility of 10. So there are six spaces provided as required, where facility requires 60% of the permitted occupancy. This property is currently uncurbed, and the CUP process would trigger the need for the property to become curbed. Reviewing the 13 criteria for the CUP, it meets all of those requirements, requires no variance or special considerations. P&amp;Z met on October 4th and voted unanimously to recommend approval with staff's proposed conditions. And staff recommends approval conditioned upon the review and inspection of the STR and the curbing along East Creek and South Creek Streets, Elk Streets.
Any questions, Anna, before we go into public hearing?
I move we go to public.
Second.
Motion second to go from regular to public hearing, on a fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone here to speak on this issue? All right.
I move we go back to regular session.
Second.
Motion second to go back into regular session, on a fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right, counsel?
I make a motion we approve, let me put my glasses on. The cup permit for section 3-110 to operate an STR occupied in R2 zone located at 411 East Creek Street.
Second. Motion and second to approve this. Bill, you've been advised and are clear about all the conditional use requirements.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? On favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Bill, that's a beautiful home, I'd hate to lose y'all. Okay. I hope if, when you rent it out, that somebody is able to take care of that fabulous kitchen. Bill is a fabulous chef, and he has a great kitchen, I'd lust to have, maybe I'll rent it. Sometimes my wife would be okay with that. Thank you, Bill. Item number F, consider a request by Teresa Isit Keppler, am I saying that correctly? Okay? For a CUP to operate an STR condominium in a C2 commercial zone area, property located at 510 Mueller, number 33. Is the applicant here?
She is not here.
Any representative of the applicant here? All right, Anna?
All right, so this is a request for a conditional use permit for an STR condominium use on a C2 zone property in the Mueller or Carriage Park condominium regime. The property is part of the Carriage Hills condominium development, which does allow STR units, that include 36 units, three of which are STRs. The unit is a two-story 1,573 square foot building with three bedrooms. The property takes access from Mueller Street into the development, and then has a 12-foot wide driveway off of a private aisle into the property where guests may park in a one-car garage or park in the driveway, where one parking space is available. The block that unit number 33 is located in does not have any neighboring STR uses, rather it's surrounded by residences or vacant units. In addition, staff has previously received three complaints from neighbors within the located within the condominium for parking and traffic concerns dating back to July 21st of 2021. Staff also identified the nature of the development is dense, with the average lot space being 1,600 square feet in size, with only five feet of separation from the neighboring unit. Public notification, including letters sent to property owners within 200 feet, resulted in no responses regarding this request. In reviewing the CUP criteria, the biggest concern was parking. Only two parking spaces meet the code required for size, and so if this were approved, staff would recommend occupancy be limited to six to coincide with available parking. And the P&amp;Z commission made a recommendation against the request for the CUP on October 4th. P&amp;Z expressed concern for parking density and previous denials of condo STRs in this neighborhood. City Council would have to vote, as the super majority, to override the P&amp;Z recommendation. If approval were granted, staff would recommend following conditions, including limiting occupancy to six, and the inspection of the STR permit application and fees.
And a quick question, if I may, is an HOA involved in this?
There is an HOA.
There is an HOA? And they do allow STRs?
I believe they voted to allow STRs, yes.
So I agree with planning and zoning, but there's a question to make, had discussion about HOAs versus overall, I'm not crystal clear, I need you to help me.
I'll try. The city of Fredericksburg, just like every other city in Texas except the city of Houston, are prohibited from enforcing any covenants or restrictions imposed by an HOA. So I think as part of our zoning applications and STR applications, we just ask for information about the HOA to ensure that everyone's given notice that there's been applications, but we have nothing to do with enforcement, anything to do with HOAs.
Ready to go to public hearing?
I move we go to public hearing.
Second. Motion second to go into public hearing, on a fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right, anyone here to speak on this issue? All right, I move we go to regular session.
Second.
Motion second to go back into regular, on a fair to say aye?
Aye.
I move that we deny the request.
Second.
Motion and second to deny this request. Further questions, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go to 7A, consider the proposed amendments to the zoning municipal ordinances as part of the city of Fredericksburg code ordinances regarding short-term rentals.
I will recuse.
Okay, Mr. Bradley, recusing. I have some opening comments, Meg, do I need to go ahead and get the motion to untable it before I do? All right, need a motion to take from the table, which is previous table last.
So move?
Second. Motion second to remove this from the table, on a fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right. Counsel, I just wanted to say, before we get into the discussion, that I'm prepared to vote no to approve today, and here's the reason. Yesterday, when I had a discussion with the city manager and staff about this, you know, I was asked if I thought it would be a problem that it was inadvertently not, the language, the amendment was not included in the city. Counsel, am I correct about that? When it was first put online?
That's correct.
Not a blame game, just a fact, it was inadvertently left off. And then we've got some staff comments that we received within the last day or so. And this process has been so long, and considered, and so many people involved, that I want to see if it's possible for us to have the exact amendment before we consider approval. That was the goal, that was the goal last time. Mr. Bailey asked me yesterday if I thought it would be a problem, and I have a problem of reacting in the moment and considered response later. And so I said, no, let's just go ahead, and that initial reaction, Clinton, was, can we just please bring this to an end? And no one is more interested in doing that than I am. But under the circumstances, I would prefer, this is my personal opinion, obviously, I would prefer that we have the, that we have our discussion today, which is going to include some additions perhaps, and some alterations in language and so forth, and may not be substantive, but in the interest of what I hoped would be a completely transparent process through this, that we allow one more time to have that amendment worded exactly as we're looking at. So that the people who look online for these amendments look at it and say, oh, this is what they're looking at, and there's no additional staff comments, there's no additional changes of substance, or even discussion about substance. With this discussion being maybe one of the most divisive of any I've ever seen in a community, and certainly probably one of the most divisive in Fredericksburg, I want the council to always be seen, after we approve this, as having taken the high road. And that is that we've gone overboard to make sure everybody's aware of what we're considering and how we're considering it, and that you have plenty of time to look at it before we get into our regular session to discuss it. Where we've had threats of threats of legal action all the time and accusations about certain things, I just think it's a it's it's appropriate for the council to consider that we have one more run at this and discuss today the changes, no matter how un- uh, small they are. And then ask that the next time we have the exact language that we're looking to approve and that there are no so-called surprises. As I say, it's not a blame game. It could be my fault. I'm just saying that that's where I I I'm not where I wanted to be today in approving this amendment, which is we're going to be discussing a few changes here and there. But that's, I just wanted you to be aware of that before, as we get into discussion. You may totally disagree, and that's fine. But I just wanted you to know where I was about. The cost for what I'm recommending is three weeks because it would be the next meeting, which would be November seventh. Uh, and this is a long month, so we have three weeks between this meeting and the next one. Does that put anything in jeopardy in terms of process?
Mayor, I think because of the deadlines we have built into our zoning ordinance, we, I think, in our other ordinances, I think we would have to conduct another if you delay it that long. But we could have that public hearing on the same day you have.
You have the public hearing on the same day as we consider the final approval?
Yes, sir, and you do not need additional P N Z review because they've already made their recommendation.
Okay, does that require another mail-out?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. That may make a difference to my opinion because another mail-out. All right. Presentation by staff on the on the amendment before us. We have a fly up here, so y'all see us.
I don't have a spot.
It's very bothersome. Anna, is this you? Are you the presentation person?
I am the presenter, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so based on the last meeting, uh, we did make some recommendation or make some changes, some track changes. And then staff met again yesterday, as you as you said, um, and made a few small revisions, I think kind of technical, but we wanted to go through those with you today and make sure we get it just right. So again, just a little bit of background, uh, this process started a little over a year ago to reevaluate the twenty twenty-two ordinance, which had some substantial changes to the STR ordinance. Um, in that time, we've had thirty, forty-six total new STR permits in the city. Twenty-four of those were in one condominium regime. We have our permits by type, by zoning here, again, most of those being the non-conforming because they came in before the changes of the twenty twenty-two ordinance. And so those are now considered non-conforming or sometimes called grandfathered. Um, we've got some data to show the percentages of zoning districts that are occupied by short-term rentals over time. And again, that's just kind of why we're why we're taking this initiative to protect those R one and R two neighborhoods. So generally, the big changes in this ordinance from the twenty twenty-two ordinance are summarized on the following slides. So parking, uh, we would allow tandem parking, but no longer give credit for on-street parking. People can still park on the street, still public right-of-way. Anyone can park legally on the street, but no credit would be given towards a permit. And occupancy would be a maximum of twelve.
Anna, on the, excuse me, on the parking, is that for new applicants?
That would be for new applications, yes.
Okay, do the old applications that are non-conforming under twenty twenty-two, do they get credit for the parking on the street?
We would not, yes, things that would not apply retroactively to existing would be parking and occupancy. So we would not be going, so when a permit renews under the new, we would not look at at the parking or the occupancy for those. We'd look at the live safety and advertising, but not those. So parking and occupancy wouldn't would not have to come into conformance with the new ordinance.
Right, okay, thank you.
So the big change from the last meeting is is R two. And and this draft proposes treating R two like R one, so no new unoccupied. R three, which is our multifamily zoning, would not allow for any type of STR use. Enforcement, we're looking at an accumulation of a variety of type evaluations that would then send a permit holder to city council for possible suspension. Transfers would now be required to be completed within ninety days instead of ten days. And the permit itself would require an annual inspection, and it must be posted to be visible from the exterior of the property, and it can be retained with a long-term rental for those unoccupied, um, STRs in R one. The type of permits condos would no longer be an allowed STR use, and we changed the max number of units for a B and B from eight to four. We created this idea of a special exception that would replace the conditional use permit process so that you, so this type of permit that you saw today would not come to you, it'd go to the zoning board of the zoning board of appeals. And then hot, so hot non-payment could result in a ninety-day suspension of permit, and that would be conducted by the Director of Development Services.
Excuse me, one more clarification. Back on the can be retained with long-term rental, you said just R one, would it also apply for R two?
R two, yes. Yes, it sh- yes, it would be the same language.
Okay.
Yes.
R one, R two everywhere, right? All STRs can be long-term rentals? Or is it just R one, R two?
Well, not to get into the weeds of of all STR, I mean, an ADU is a little different, um, in R one. But the issue had been, right, if you were an unoccupied in R one and then wanted to turn to convert to a long-term rental, that you wouldn't want to lose that right to have the STR permit, so we've amended the language to clarify that if you are in R one or R two unoccupied, that you could notify the city that you're switching to an LTR and that you'll continue to remit hot, non, you know, a zero payment and then do the annual inspection as well to keep, essentially keep the permit valid and and stay on our records to retain that ability to then switch back to the short-term rental in the future.
I just thought that was for everyone because I thought the whole issue was ADUs could be, there only can be STRs right now, and we wanted them to be able to be at long-term rentals. Is that y'all's understanding? Okay. Just as we're conscious of what the mayor said, do y'all have the word document where we can make the changes here so we can see it final before we approve it today? Is that possible?
Yes, you have, what you have printed in front of you with the yellow highlights is the is the latest draft. But we can pull it up on the screen as well.
And yes, the the long-term rental conversion is available to all STRs. Thank you.
Do we specify a term? Didn't we say we're enticing people to consider the long-term rental option? Then we specified that you could retain your permit as long as you filed your hot for up to two years? Wasn't that something we talked about?
We did not put a time limit on that.
Y'all remember talking about that?
I thought we had a two-year.
You? I mean, I do forget things, but I seem to remember that in the last discussion, you said, what do y'all think about two years? Because we wanted those owners to have the opportunity to do that up to two years and then say, well, it's not working for me, you know, in other words, it is an enticement. So that would be something I thought we had asked. I'm certainly willing to believe that we did not make that clear. You remember, Clinton?
I remember some discussion about that, yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, for me personally, I'm fine. If you want to keep paying your permit fee, but you're continuing to long-term rent it, that's great. So I'd rather not put a two-year
Okay.
limit on it, but I I'm happy to be corrected as to why we do need it.
Well, the reason I said up to two years was so that they didn't long-term rent it for six months and say, well, I've had a bad dinner, I'm going back. But, you know, but that may be trying to be too smart, I have, I don't.
I agree with Emily that if we give them an opportunity to long-term rent it as long as they want, that's fine, and then if they want to go back to STR, then okay, but as long as they keep paying the fees and, uh, keep filing the zero hot tax, I'm I'm
Is that clear in the amendment that if they decide to do that, if an owner decides to do that, then they could continue that and as long as they upkeep the permit requirements?
Yes, there's no, there's no time limit on their ability to convert to long-term rental as long as they comply with those three criteria.
So it it stays the same enticement sample. All right, Anna, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so that was just the kind of the summary of the high-level changes from the twenty twenty-two to what's in front of you today. So for conversation today, some things I think we needed to just clarify. Uh, the special exceptions, again, this would be a new process for zoning board of adjustment. This is proposed to take the place of the CUP process. This would apply to new R one and R two unoccupied stranded properties. Um, I think we need clarification on in R two, currently in R two, an unoccupied in the historic district requires a CUP. Did you want to continue to allow the potential of unoccupied R two in the historic district? Or or not? And the same for the R two facility. So those are the two that you saw today. The first one you saw today, the Zesh's, was an R two unoccupied in the historic district. And the second one you saw, um, was an R two facility, also in the historic district.
Is that new R two facility when abutting non-residential zoning, what applies to R one as well?
Well, the stranded, there's some similar language in the stranded, but not exactly.
Because I do remember this, the council's intent was that R one, R two should be noted the same in terms of special exceptions.
So no longer allowing an R two unoccupied in the historic district unless it's a stranded property?
Yes, that was what I thought we did, and that's just neat.
So here's, here's to me the difference, because in R one, we said, okay, if everyone around you is an STR, whatever the percentage, seventy-five, then you can be one. But in R two, aren't we saying we're trying to spread it out, so if there is a, you know, twelve percent?
No.
Twelve point five in the R two, no.
It's same language, yeah, but twelve point five was never actually considered. The the direction we took last time was to treat R one and R two stranded the same.
That's what I
Right, now, I just don't know if you understood that then the R two has always had these, like, like what you saw today, the historic district? Right, because all other R two previously has allowed by right, one unoccupied. Historic district, you've seen several of these. I think they've all been approved in the historic district when they come to you because they often are these small houses that would not easily convert to to full-time residence. So I didn't know if you wanted to keep that ability for R two historic district to continue to go through a special exception or omit it and only treat R two like just the stranded, the opportunity for stranded. And then the R two facility, again, that that can be up to eight depending on the size of the lot. So if you want to remove the facility in R two or leave it through the special exception, as it right now goes through the CUP.
I think it might be nice to remove R two facility because it hasn't been an option in R one, but they're coming in in R two, so.
When abutting, when abutting, uh, non-residential zone. So that would be, what's an example?
Like you saw today, so one side of the creek was zoned commercial. The neighbors around it were STR. I don't think it would have met met the seventy-five percent. I don't think we've ever seen anything that's ever met seventy-five percent. But actually, the seventy-five percent is not a requirement for the R two facility. Just non-residential abutting zoning. So this is an R two zone property. Um, the one, what you see down here is actually a facility. This is, this is just an example of a two hundred or a two-hundred-foot radius in an R two zone. Same as here, this is an R one, but, you know, change the color. An actual project that wouldn't be able to meet that that stranded threshold.
We go back to the previous. Um, I'm foggy-headed about this, but I thought that our intent was to with the new amendment going harder, prohibit STR facilities in R two. In other words, there weren't allowed, there was no special exception. No abutting special exceptions. Is that fraught with problem?
I don't think it's fraught with problem. So I think if if council decides to remove that special exception, we can. I don't think that it's come up before though. If a property events commercial in a way that an STR facility makes sense, duplexes might make sense to fourplexes, things that are for residents. To to not open the door to more facilities. To not open the door to more facilities, STR facilities. If the project would, you know, be appropriate to have a facility there, might as well do a fourplex there or a sixplex or something for long-term residence.
So to close the door with a new amendment, the R two STR facilities, which is not a special exception provision. I think that was my attempt when I suggested make R two like R one. I would agree with that.
And what about the historic district special exception? How many more properties are we talking about that are R two historic? I'm just curious what kind of caseload we'll be dealing with.
Do you have a zoning map handy? It's, that's a the R two zone. It's all around the middle school.
Mostly around the middle school and then in this creek, this Creek Street area that you saw this morning is also R two, so over here where we were this morning. Um, and then, yes, around the middle school. And a little bit on like, uh, San Antonio Street, again, the other one you saw, a good example of a small structure that is surrounded by STRs, but again, we probably wouldn't meet that seventy-five percent threshold.
Right, so the question was whether to give the special exception or go to historic overlay.
Because right now, if you're R two, not in the historic district, you don't get to apply. Right?
As written, right, you would not get to apply unless you were a stranded R two outside of the historic district. So this is still just leaving kind of the door open for those, um, small houses in the historic district to go to, to go to ask for a special exception with the new criteria.
Good morning.
See you, Tom.
Uh, the special exception process for R two in the historic district, I just wanted to bring to your attention that two of the seven, maybe eight STR unoccupieds you've considered with a conditional use permit in R two historic were expired permits. They had been operating as short-term rentals for years. Their permit had expired, and the only option for them to continue that use was to go through the CUP process. So if we remove that from the special exception, all of the R two historic properties, if they were ever to expire, would never have the ability to go back and obtain that short-term rental permit use.
Tom, step up. I'll hear you.
Morning, Mayor, counsel. It seems like we're focusing, the R two is, we're focusing downtown. Can we bring up the map and go to Friendship Lane?
Tom, we're talking about R two historic district, though.
Well, I understand that, but we're talking, but I, what I'm talking about is R two. Okay, there are some R, there are R two residences on Friendship Lane. To my knowledge, there are two residences left on Friendship Lane. But there is a lot of undeveloped R two land But there is a lot of undeveloped R2 land on Friendship Lane. And so the question I have, I have one of, I have one of the two residences that are, that are on Friendship. In Mr. Joseph's case, he, he abutted a commercial zone across the creek, okay? I abut a PUD, but I'm separated from the PUD by Friendship Lane. He subs, he's, he is, um, he is separated by a creek, I'm separated by a city road, but we're not the same. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Okay, well, that.
Well, he's in the historic district, that's why he came up for a special exception.
Okay, but I under, I understand that, but are we having, but according to the, the way that this is, is written, is the only, the only way, if I was, if, if my property is considered to be abutting a PUD, which it does, it, well, it's across the street from CECO, the CECO pud. Okay, so if I was abutting the CECO pud, then at some time in the future, if my wife and I wanted to apply for an STR permit, because I'm going to be, I'm about to be surrounded by apartment complexes across the street and a apartment, single-family apartments surrounding my house. So I'm looking at what options I have as an R2 property owner on probably the most developed piece of, the most developed area of the city in the last two years, so.
What are you recommending we consider?
Well, I'm recommending is, uh, do, is my, is, is my piece of property, is Mr. Rivera's piece of property on Friendship, are they considered stranded? Under this ordinance?
No.
Okay, so they would.
You could apply for an STR permit.
Okay.
Today, and not, and not have any requirements. You'd be allowed by right.
Okay.
Today.
But with the passage of this amendment, that closes?
Yes, that would close it on, on his. So as to save that R2 undeveloped four neighborhoods, is my understanding.
Because I've got, I've got a 24-unit STR complex across the street from me. It's not within 200 feet. But according to the ordinance now, uh, Mr. Collins would be precluded from developing any more units like that. Except in what, C1 or C2?
You're talking about condominiums?
No, I'm talking about STR compounds.
A compound would be, a, a facility would be allowed in C1 or C2, yes.
All right, thank you.
So what do we end up with, R2?
Let me pull up the STR zoning map so you can see, and how many we have already there. So you can kind of see the concentration of STRs in the R2 historic district. And the historic district had been talked about before as maybe being the, the zone. I think it is actually a potential recommendation out of the comp plan as well. Again, this would just be to allow for consideration of a special exception. And those criteria for the ZBA to consider are on page 17, 16 and 17.
So Anna, you mentioned these are smaller houses, smaller lots. Here on page, I'm looking on page 18, B2. ZBA, one of the, um, criteria is when located within the historic overlay district, only one structure operates as a short-term rental use per 5,000 square feet of land. Average lot size over there, do you know?
The historic lot size is 10,000. I think that's where we came up with that.
Okay. What would it look like to just treat R2 the same, regardless of historic overlay? What do y'all think?
I'm currently fine with that. I think that was the intent of my comment at the last.
Is that what you said?
Definitely.
So then I'll ask that we look at the stranded qualifications. The draft that was published did not, it was intentional, but it did not include the, the language about non-residential in that 75%. Staff would submit that I think 75% is, is too high of a threshold to even be able to apply for a special exception. Again, because we've never seen anything ever qualify. Even the ones today wouldn't have qualified to even apply, yet they were granted. So I, I would submit that 50 is more reasonable. It's still a very high threshold. If you look at, I think both of the two today had 20 parcels, more or less. So you're talking about 10, 10 STR unoccupied, not ADU, not PUD, um, just to be able to qualify. And then again, we, we want to add that non-residential land use for consideration as well. Again, for that Elk Street property, that didn't get to consider a hotel or reenactment zone across the street. Didn't help the consideration, go into the consideration.
I just think we have so many STRs right now, and that doesn't preclude anyone from purchasing, if we're keeping transferability intact. We still have over a thousand permits, and this is opening the door to more. Can people not purchase a home with an existing STR permit if they want to run an STR? I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just saying, there's already a lot out there.
Take away the text and show the, the map. It's on there now. There you go, the purple.
Yes.
That person is trying to sell that property. And I don't know how many are like this, but this would be a perfect example of a stranded property. I don't believe they'll be able to sell that property for anywhere near its value because it's surrounded, well, next to STRs and also, you've got a hotel across Austin, you've got Nemets across Elk. And then restaurants on Cattie Corner, so.
I get that, but I keep coming back to like, it's not our job to ensure that someone gets the most value they can.
I understand. That's R1, right? That is R1.
Correct, but there could be a similar, again, we're going to write the language the same for R1 and R2 stranded.
And I think staff's particular concern is that no one has managed to qualify for a CUP with the 75% threshold. And if no one is qualifying, that likely means that the threshold is too high. So staff does recommend lowering that threshold to 50%.
Well, that sounds like making it easier to get more STR.
This is still a special exception that would have to go before the ZBA, so the ZBA would have to consider the criteria laid out in the ordinance, determine whether that use is appropriate, uh, and then approve any application for a special exception. It's not automatic.
But if 75% makes it, in other words, nobody's been able to qualify, then it's having the effect that we want, isn't it?
But is it de facto moratorium or not?
It's what?
It's a problem if it's moratorium. We have this like, here's how you can fly, but no one qualifies.
Okay, so you're saying that it's, it's getting into areas that create legal issues. Possible legal issue.
Correct.
Somebody can say that nobody could ever qualify, why do you have this?
Right. So the special exception, the intent is to create a pressure valve to allow STR uses on certain properties where it might be appropriate. So if the threshold is too high for people to qualify for that special exception, it's not functioning the way it's intended to.
Okay, all right. We live in different worlds, because I would say that is exactly what you want. Is if you can meet that standard, then that's a special exception. Otherwise, there isn't a special exception, but. Okay.
So, sorry, B3, it would then, from what this red line draft is, it would say 50%? And keep the, or other non-residential use in?
Correct.
Page 18.
Thank you. Okay. Is that your presentation, or is there, does that have some questions?
I know there was still a bit more discussion to be had on enforcement. As written, we're talking about the major and minor. So we can discuss that a little bit more. That's how it's drafted. And then just, um, implementation and effective date will be important to give staff their next steps in prepping the zoning board of adjustment for the special exception software, and then the fee schedule. Right now, since special exception, this would be new, to be qualified in this ordinance. We'll also have to bring back a fee, a fee schedule that creates an, an application fee for a special exception.
When can that be ready?
November 7th.
Okay.
Counsel, I, I think we wrote this last time, which was the three minors equals one major, three majors equals review, potential suspension, so forth. Which obviously addresses the repeat offenders who aren't trying to operate well, which I know is the minority. In the city, in the PNC discussion, it was brought up that this sounds, it seems overly complicated. Three minors, one major, three majors, this, that, and the other. Overly complicated in the sense of staff having to keep up. Somebody could ostensibly have nine major, uh, minor violations before this comes up. So that's clearly a person or an operator who's not operating well and not taking care of business well, which I know most do. Are you open to any just, uh, difference in that provision to make it a number of, a certain number of any type of violation, uh, per year? In other words, at, at time of renewal, since they're going to be renewing every year? If they have a number of violations that have been vetted, that they are automatically under review by council for some level of suspension. I know that the argument of that is that you have people who then want to, maybe not with the best motives, target certain operations and try to get them in trouble and get a number of violations so that they have to go out of business, so forth. That's not my point. My point is, we hear from the STRA people that by far, most of our people operate well, and that we are as interested as the city council is in, um, in getting those bad actors, as has been called often, to shape up and operate well, because they make us all look bad and so forth. Do you have any room for a change in that particular provision to make it, uh, a number of violations of any kind in 12 months? Between review, I mean, sorry, between renewal, and if so, do you have a number in mind? Or are you okay with the three minor equals one major, three majors equals review?
Any legal ramifications before we decide?
I'm sorry?
Any legal ramifications before we decide on that with the numbers?
So we, we do want to, want to keep this reasonable, and we don't want to have any sort of de facto permit revocation for a certain number of violations. We do want that to be a true suspension and not, for example, a one-year revocation of a permit.
I'm not talking about a revocation. I'm talking about a review for why do you have five violations for noise?
Right, so let's, let's kind of see where the conversation takes us and revisit it.
What page are, what pages is on it? 12.
Anna, do you have, I have another blue copy. I've got, for some reason, I have a red copy.
Pages are different.
The pages are different. What page are you?
12.
What page are you referring to?
12, the repeat offenses, suspension, revocation.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Looking at different drafts or something.
What?
My page 12 is host rules. Each 14 of the blue line.
The 14, that's handy. Okay, what's before us? Where are we? What are we deciding?
So under repeat, repeat offenses, where, Gerald, are you wanting it to say a number instead of?
Well, three provides for, um, five or more violations of federal law, state law, or other provisions of the city code outside of this article. So I'm talking about specific violations relative to an STR operation, which is one A and B. And I, I understand the desire to define them as minor and major. I'm asking about the three major. And, um, yeah, if they get nine bites of the apple with a ma, with minor. Maybe that's okay. I'm, that's what I'm asking.
I'm fine with it. The way I look at it is if you're a good operator, you shouldn't have an issue. If you're a bad operator, this should give you some pause. And we're likely, if you're a bad one, you're going to be in the major.
Okay. What else, Anna? Anything else in your presentation? Sure I don't. Got you short. Sure I don't. Got you short. Okay, go ahead.
Just one of the other thing that we changed.
What I'm getting from the council is you're good, you're good with the unit.
Life safety. So, let's go to life safety, section twenty dash two-two-two. The fire extinguishers, the most recent draft had language about requiring annual inspection. Our understanding is there's only one company in town that does that. And so that might be very difficult for people actually to complete each year. Item three simplifies the egress requirement just to say that egress must be provided. And item five just reminds people about the setbacks for pools and hot tubs. And under conduct and on premise, adding language about, since we have fire pits, obviously, we just wanted to put language in there about following the Gillespie County burn ban.
How does that apply to backyard? Like if they have a chimney or an open fire, like a, a structure that's designed for a fire, people sitting around the fire somewhere? Does county ban apply to that?
If it's an open fire, yes.
An open fire, even in a fire pit that's designed for it?
That's what I understand.
Alright.
We can see her.
So when the county's in a, in a burn ban, then an STR operator, I mean, an STR cannot operate with a fire pit out of the backyard, an open fire?
Correct.
Okay.
And so this is just making the operator, putting them on notice, hey, be sure and let people know if there's a burn ban.
So is that in one of the major, I mean, minor violation issues?
B is minor.
Only the fire marshal can issue that violation, so.
I understand. But I'm saying in the ordinance, does it specify open fire during a burn ban? In other words, making sense out of the, get from burn ban, what does that mean? It means that you can't have an open fire. So if you do, that's a violation, right?
And the city ordinance address that as far as open fires or contained?
It does. We were just wanting to put every, you know, the thing, the issues that we see at the STRs, what are the common problems? One of the common complaints is, hey, my neighbors, you know, got this crazy fire going, even if we didn't have a burn ban, you know? That's why in the last ordinance, we moved the position of the, of the fire pits. But in this one, we just wanted to, since it's, if you're going to have a fire pit, let's have a little language about fire safety and burn ban.
I think if you put that in there, that's giving some people an opening. So I'm thinking you ought to completely drop it out.
An opening for what?
Burn ban really has nothing to do with city.
Yes, it applies.
Yeah, it does.
It applies in the city.
The county calls it, city must apply.
This is cities in the county.
So the, the setback deals with the semi-permanent issue, but that doesn't deal with the weekly rental issue, right? I mean, so shouldn't fire, the fire provision be specified in the minor violation? I'm asking.
Yes, we can do that.
Because people are saying, please tell us exactly what you want us to apply by. Don't throw anything new at us. And I like, I approve, I approve. We promised our STR friends that we would be very specific.
Right, so we would add that language to be repeat offenses, violations, minor, A.
Okay, I have a question about the major minor violations. I prefer the council's consensus then on three equals, three minors equals one major, three majors equals whatever. Okay. I want to pose two scenarios, Rachel, and you tell me, and Anna, either one. Two scenarios about operating without a permit. Someone has a permitted STR decides to move away, so they turn the operation over to their sister and brother-in-law who want to move to further and get in the business. They're told all the requirements, but in the busyness of moving to town and getting everything else done, they're taking over and operating STR. They forget to note their renewal date, and a couple of three months goes by, and they've been operating without a valid permit. We catch it, we notify them, and they, oh my goodness, we had no idea, we're new, we bought this from my brother, and so let's take care of it now. Good, okay, fine. That's one scenario. The scenario is someone is intent on operating property as an STR, but doesn't want to bother with city regulations. They do everything online, and they figure out stealthy ways to stay under the radar. They don't pay hot or sales, they bank on outsmarting the city, and they operate for six months before they get caught. Are both situations treated the same by the language of this ordinance?
They would be.
Is there a way to specify a difference in how those are treated? Does that get too much into the entanglement, Mick, I'm asking you, entanglement of, well, how do you prove this? How do you know that? You've got to prove intent, et cetera.
I, I think you just put your finger on it, Mayor. Proving intent is sort of, is a difficult thing, makes it, any regulation that tried to do that would be pretty vague and would be difficult for prosecutor municipal court to establish.
So the answer is, it's not a good idea to specify.
We're, we're generally objective about everything we try to enforce. That's to keep it objective.
Okay.
There, on that point, there had been discussion about the new revised software being able to issue reminders to people, maybe like sixty, thirty days out, whatever. Hey, like, could that be helpful, Mayor, for people who might forget, you know, and keep operating for three months if they have received notification?
Do we have a routine way?
That is anticipated with the new software system that we can do that.
So we're headed toward that?
Yes.
So it wouldn't get defense to say, gee, I didn't know?
Well, again, it's a physical permit that you print and you post. So you should, you should see it. And you can check now online, you know, the map is there. So, I mean, and we're doing more outreach, so city's trying to do more.
I know, but I'm talking about these people who never have a permit, in other words. And I know they exist. There may be eight of them, I don't know, or there may be fifty, I don't know. That's the point, you don't know.
Nick?
Am I trying to reach too far?
Back to the mayor's point. If we can prove that an individual or someone has never applied for a permit, never paid hot tax, never paid sales tax, is that intent to go around the system and operate without?
Well, it, it certainly does improve an intent, but penalties are built into each thing you mentioned. If you don't pay hot tax, you owe money to everyone, the state and the city. Actually, as you know, hot tax is not owed by, not paid by the owner of the STR, it's paid by the guest.
Right.
They're merely holding it in a fiduciary capacity for the state and the city. So there's built-in penalties there. And those are built regardless of motivation. If you don't pay it, you, you have to pay penalties. I think what you're asking is, can we be, have a higher degree of penalty or some type of suspension of privilege to operate if there's that evidence? I think it's still best to keep everything subject, object, and not try to get into people's minds.
Do we, I mean, we know of some operators that don't have a permit, continue to operate. We know how many?
A small handful. And we can continue to write citations for daily offenses. Send them back to municipal court again.
Alright, anything else, counsel?
I had two small things. Twenty-four hour contact is defined twice in the ordinance, and they're not consistent. So I think twenty dash two-two-two is the correct, just making sure that twenty dash two-two-zero mimics that for twenty-four hour contact. If y'all could just double check it. And I had suggested last time, this is on page six of my draft, short-term rental unoccupied or STR unoccupied definition. Just to try to make it simpler, I said, call it a short-term rental within a lawful residential dwelling that is not operating as an STR ADU or STR B and B. I think you might need to add or STR facility, if that works.
You see what that is, Rachel?
I don't know if that needs to be clarified, or it might be fine.
I think, I think the idea is that STR facilities don't look like residential dwellings.
Okay.
But if you would prefer that we include it for clarity, we can.
I'm sorry, what was the response?
Just that STR facilities don't look like residential dwellings, they look like complexes. So, but if we would prefer to include that for clarity, we can. For clarity, I mean, I would know, I would call a facility a residential dwelling, because I don't know in town, so what that.
Let's think that through. So you could technically have an S, you could live in one and rent out the rest. So by, I just want to be careful, we change the definition that we're not including that.
Alright. Johnny, you have something? Alright, you all believe that you have enough discussion on this item, too?
If your council is finished with discussion, we do have a recommendation for today that may avoid the requirement of a second hearing after reviewing our ordinance. What the ordinance requires is after the PNC makes a recommendation, you have twenty days to make findings based upon the recommendation of the PNC and upon the public hearing that you held. If you make some findings today and then table action until later date, I don't believe you have to repost the public hearing.
Thank you for that. Have we met the criteria for, for, what'd you say about PNC making findings?
Making finding.
Seems like we have.
Well, I'd like you to have a formal motion and second on the findings that you make. And they can be fairly general, Mayor. Just a motion and second that findings based upon PNC recommendation and the public hearing that we conducted, that there is a need to make the amendments to the ordinance.
Okay.
And something general like that would satisfy the requirements.
And so that satisfies the twenty-day requirement?
Yes, sir.
And then we could?
And no further public hearing is required unless you wish.
Okay, then I, then what I stated at the beginning of this might, could be approved by counsel without having to go through another public hearing and the mail out and so forth.
You, you could do that, and I think you would be in compliance with our twenty-day requirement if you made those findings today.
Alright. Alright, so anything else?
I was just going to, one other, the, the big crux of it is section S twenty dash two-two-six, applicability to existing operations and non-conforming. So I just want to make sure that we get this language correct. It's up on the screen now on page fifteen. Since this was a red line, I think we should just look at it, make sure this is, this is good. So what's going to apply to existing when they renew? So the regulations here pertaining to life safety, twenty-four hour contact, signage, food service, host rules, conduct on premise, duration of rental, hot, application information, advertising shall apply across the board to existing and new STRs. Alright, existing STRs operating shall come into compliance with all of these regulations at, by renewal, upon renewal of the permit. Regulations governing occupancy and parking shall not apply to STRs holding a lawful permit. So that, that's the crux of the non-conforming, and when they have to come into compliance with all these other issues at renewal. And so remember, we are going to a yearly renewal, a yearly inspection.
Alright, before we move on this, I have some people who'd like to speak. Matt? I'm going to restrict you to three minutes, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, counsel, officials. Thank you all for your time on this. I don't have a formal speech ring this morning, but what I do want to just point out, and from, you know, Anna's data, and the great data in the presentation, is the ordinance is doing what it's been designed to do, right? It's been designed to limit the number of short-term rentals. You can see the data, I believe it's about a fifteen percent decrease just from year over year. That number is going to continue to decrease, if one hundred percent is. But then, you know, also the concern is when you also hear October fest going from twenty-eight thousand people to thirty-four thousand people lodging, other issues. You know, short-term rentals aren't creating this to be a tourism town. You know, the, the town is a tourism town, it has gone that direction. I, you clearly can see that it's not going back, it's going up and up and up. There is a, obviously, a heavier amount of supply of short-term rentals than there, there have been before. Most of those are just going to the county now. But the ordinance has decreased by about fifteen percent, I would say, in just economic demands, interest rates, numbers, you know, the, those things are correcting itself. And my ask is, let's have an ordinance, and as you stated, let's be very clear in the language so we can operate effectively. There have been many instances that myself and our company are constantly dealing with how the enforcement's being handled, inappropriate citations, you know, things like that that we're constantly dealing with. And we just need to know how to properly operate, we want to properly operate. And, you know, we're not perfect. We've had citations, many citations have never returned, some corrected, made us put in better enforcement on how we do things. But we just need it black and white so that we can all move on from this and that we can be good members in the community as well. So that's all I have to say this morning, but I just want to point out, numbers are decreasing. And so it is, it is big effect. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Mark Collins? Thank you, counsel, and all your volunteer time. I know you're not getting paid big bucks, but I'm Mark Collins. I've built a couple of condo STRs in town here. I am a registered voter in Gillespie County. I have a property just outside of town. And I own four STRs in my project on South Eagle Street that I decided to retain ownership in. I guess I'm trying to get my head around, and some of my STR friends aren't going to like this, what I'm about to say, is when I first looked at STRs, I chose not to be in R1, because I felt if I lived in R1, I wouldn't want an STR by me, okay? So, but having said that, the city did give STR permits to R1 people through the years, and people bought based on that information. But what I'm trying to find out, my only dog in the fight here, so to speak, is my R2 properties, the condos, and why they are considered a, a bad situation for the city. Because they're clustered, they're together, they're not bothering anybody else, and they're designed specifically for STRs. They're condos, but they're not apartments. The closet is about this big, like you see in a hotel. So the death penalty for an owner is if, like, for an example, I have an owner that I sold a condo to four years ago on Highway Street. He had a management company, they dropped the ball on him, and did not renew his permit. He did not know this, but he kept paying the hot tax for a year and a half or so. And then he got noticed that, hey, you haven't renewed your permit. So he tried to get back and renew it and be in good standing, knew somebody dropped the ball. Nope. I agree, it's partly his problem too, because he's an owner, and he should have been on top of it too. But he is now, cannot get an STR permit for that property anymore, and it's only designed and built for that. That's no different than if, and this is kind of a hypothetical deal, you got a hotel, and there's one hotel room in that hotel that's got problems, and the city says you can't rent that as a hotel room anymore. Well, Well, what else are they going to do with it? Like this gentleman, no one really wants to buy this condo and live by a bunch of STR people that are all close together, back to back. I'm just trying to get some counseling from y'all on, can we not be, I understand R1 problems, and it's only probably of just a few owners, like you say. But I think that the R2 and my clustered condo communities that were specifically designed for short-term rental should not face some kind of a death penalty and be burdensome on this person trying to sell something that he can't sell. I mean, yeah, he could probably sell it for a lot less than he paid for it. Somebody eventually buy it. But on the other hand, he, he did do something wrong. He didn't have his permit. He should be fined for that. Maybe, maybe come up with a big fine. I bet the guy would pay $3,000 fine, just so he could get his permit back. I didn't ask him that, but I bet I would have. Because I know, hey, I dropped the ball, my management dropped the ball, and we want to redo it. But even if you don't give this owner a permit, he should, that penalty should not apply to that unit. The new owner, you, you've been a bad owner, so you can't operate an STR there anymore. So he can sell it, but he should be able to sell it to someone else that could apply for an STR and not be the death penalty for that one little unit in a community of STRs.
May I ask you a question? Because I'm unclear. What has a death penalty been applied to, under what terms?
What, he tried to get his STR reapplied when he found out it was expired. They, the city turned it down, said, no, you, you can't get an STR, you're non-conforming in R2 condo. So he's now got to, he's twiddling, wringing his hands trying to figure what he's supposed to do with this property. He's still paying taxes on.
So those, that's under ordinance already existing, right? I mean, that's nothing we're considering.
Right.
Has to do with a death penalty.
Yeah.
As far as I know. Am I missing something? We were talking about from the effective date of this amendment, this is what we'd like to happen in R2. But we've not touched the transferability issue or the continuation of permit.
Okay, well, maybe I misunderstood it. I thought it was.
Something, Shelby? With regard, excuse me, Mark, is that she, she does this all day? Stay, go ahead and stay up, it's you.
I think what Mr. Collins is referring to is his property is an STR condominium located in an R2. And once that permit is lost, it would require a conditional use permit in R2 if the property is immediately abutting a non-residential zoning district, which it is not.
Okay, so they don't meet the requirements of a CUP, which they had to renew their, getting in line with the CUP because they let their permit lapse.
Correct.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with council decision? That is, that's an ordinance that is already in place.
Right, and, and there's, there goes my problem. It was an ordinance that was already placed. I know things can be reviewed and turned over probably, you know?
But it's not before us today to revise the previous amendment in that capacity.
Okay, well, I would like that to be considered in the future, you know, just as that. And one other thing, there was a, a man here, and I believe he's here today, that, at planning and zoning, made a statement that we don't need any more tourists in this town. Well, STRs don't drive tourists to the town. It's the restaurants, the shops, the promotion of Oktoberfest, and all your festivals that you advertise and market for tourists.
I've let you go another minute longer. Okay, I appreciate your comment, I do. However, we're not discussing today the tourism business in terms of numbers and so forth. That is an issue that people do have. I don't think anybody on the council feels that we need, we need to shut down the tourism business. And, and I, speaking for myself, Mark, I've always said that I understand the contribution that STRs make to that industry. And I've always said that STRs and the right numbers and the right places, operating the right ways are a strength of Fredrickspur. And so this whole amendment thing, the last year in my purview, has been to address where they're in the wrong number, maybe in the wrong place, not operating the wrong way. That's been my, my, so thank you for your.
All right, thank you.
Mike Mahoney?
Thank you, Council. I applaud your detailed efforts on this and your willingness to table this, hopefully, and get it right. Two points I'd like to make, and be three. R2 residential, it is residential, treat it like residential, and make it the same as R1. You can revise it in the future. To me, that's an important point that's kind of lost. Is it, now that this is out of the zoning ordinance, assuming this amendment passes, you can make these changes in the future and tighten them up. But you can't loosen them up in the future once they become STRs. So if you're gonna make those changes, please do that. The correction that Emily suggested, under short-term rental unoccupied and adding STR facility there as not a short-term rental unoccupied is important because the way this is written right now is an STR facility is, is an STR unoccupied. And so it has consequences that they could be put anywhere an unoccupied STR could be. You could put a facility. So if you limit that and distinguish between that an STR facility is not an STR unoccupied use, you've clarified, there's four uses, right? B and B, ADR, STR unoccupied, and facility. So just, you know, clarify it the way you did with ADU and B and B. You know, STR unoccupied is a distinguished use. And I want to point out, in the enforcement discussions over, you know, three, three minors equal a major, three majors, you know, there is no provision now in this draft for any review by council. So, you know, it doesn't really become anything. So you, you, you add up the minors to get three majors, but if you read that, that provision there, it doesn't say it will go to the council for review. So that, that, what is in our current, you know, thinking somehow got lost there. So it, you know, as they suggested, it'll keep going to municipal court and they'll keep getting fined, but many court doesn't have the ability to suspend permits. That's a council decision. So I'd encourage you at least to think about adding that for the worst of the actors if they ever come at the end. Thank you very much.
Rachel, what about that, adding the provision for council review under three majors?
So we've got, we've got provisions here that if the director finds that the owner, operator, any occupant of a short-term rental accumulates three citations for major violations, which would, if three minor violations constitute three major violation, or a major violation, then that triggers the director to refer the short-term rental permit to the city council for review. And then there's, there's further provisions about that. So it does, it does refer the permit to city council.
Jeffrey Cole?
Good morning, Jeffrey Cole. I'm an owner and resident of property in Frederickburg. It's basically, I want to commend you for addressing the short-term rentals and coming up with, you know, a new amendment. I happen to come from a Rhode Island area that was a high tourist area that didn't address the short-term rentals, and it turned into an absolute mess. So I just wanted to commend you for addressing it. Thank you.
Always like those positive words. All right, Council, how do you want to dispose of this today?
Council wants to consider tabling the decision today and still comply with the requirements of the ordinance after P and Z recommendation. My colleague, Erickson, more production language.
Somebody wants, all right, does somebody want to move to approve today? Be glad to.
I'm sorry, Tony, before.
I'm asking to approve the amendment as we have received it and discussed it today. In other words, not, not tabling it. All right.
I feel like we have a good grasp on it. I just want to make clear that tabling it suggests that we're not doing anything ever. And the goal is that we would, if we table it today, we are taking action at our next meeting on November 7th. I think there's some misinformation going around that we were just throwing it all out. Last round of news.
Great point. And Emily, that was my intention in my comments, is that let's not go on forever, but it go on past today. And I'm looking at November 7th. And the final reading and the final approval, that's my goal. Personally. Yeah, Tom? I don't know the procedure, what do you think? You could be right, Tom.
Well, if you do postpone your decision for any reason, we'd still recommend you make this finding so we can avoid having to have a second hearing in no good sense. But as a practical matter, I don't think it matters which you select because if you table to a date certain or you table the next meeting, it's still the same.
So my understanding is table is linked to a specific next time, right? In other words, I'm going to table it till next, you have, that's the point of tabling.
Table is automatically to the next meeting unless you state another date.
Okay, that's my intent, is next meeting, because no one is more anxious than me to bring this to a happy conclusion, including all of the staff who work on this all. All right, Tony, did you want to read that motion with regard to our findings of P and Z?
We're trying to put the monster to bed, right? Motion, I made, I make a motion, city council finds that those changes are consistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and with the comprehensive plan, and move to table the final approval of this ordinance to November 7th, 2023, at our next meeting for the city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion, questions? Hold in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, that's a unanimous vote. Is that, is that all we need to do today for my, what I was proposing? Yes, thank you. I want to take a five-minute break, it's time, and I do mean five. Thank you. All right, let's reconvene. Thank you for your patience. I believe that we are finally to eight other action items and updates. So let's first consider approving the CX, am I right? Okay, the CXT Conover Building restroom and shark quote for LBJ Muni Park for $272,530. Andrea?
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. This morning, I'm bringing you the purchase of a restroom shower facility out at Lady Bird Johnson Park, specifically in the RV park. We have three restrooms out there, we've replaced two the last three years. These are modular restrooms that are brought in on cranes, and city staff does the demo. This would be the third and last restroom, replacing a building that's about 45 years old. That was built by city staff. So we'll replace that. The total cost is $272,530. This is from Sourcewell, which is a competitively bid product already. The restroom will take about 120 days to build. We will knock down the old restroom and hopefully have this one installed next summer during a slow time. But we want to go ahead and get it ordered now before the price goes up again. The total budget was $330,000. So the remaining funds will be used to build the pad site or sidewalk, add heating, final connections, and then any incidentals. We should come in under budget. So I'll answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you for continuing to get under budget on these projects. I know it's hard, thank you.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve this item. Any further discussion or questions? Hold favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
B, consider a request from Heritage Hill Country subdivision relating to the maintenance of roadways within the development. Eric?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So after a discussion at a town hall hosted by Heritage Hill Country earlier this year, the HOA Board of Directors submitted a formal request for the city to take over maintenance of the roadways within the development. So just for reference. So just for reference, Heritage Hill Country is located on a 60-acre tract just east of here, across from Fort Martin Scott. It includes about 170 single-family lots and two commercial tracks running Main Street. There's also common areas and a clubhouse located within the center of the development. So when the property was developed in the 1990s, all the infrastructure was built to the current city standards. But the decision was made to develop it as a private gated subdivision. So it was developed under a pud regime. There's also improved landscaping throughout the, throughout the development. But overall, after inspecting the streets, they've been really, really well maintained. And so there's no concerns with the, any of the current conditions of the pavement. So the city attorney is dra-
Oh, is it still gated then?
Yes, it is. So the, the city does have access through those gates. We have all the appropriate codes to get in there. So after receiving the letter, the city attorney drafted the agreement that's in her packet. Under the terms of the agreement, the city would be responsible for the paving maintenance, basically maintenance of the city streets. However, the HOA would still maintain responsibility for the sidewalks, landscaping, and the gates themselves. So if the agreement is approved, it would add about 29,500 square yards of pavement to the city's current inventory. That's an addition of about 1.4% to the approximately 2.1 million square yards of pavement that we currently maintain. So looking at it from a budget standpoint, assuming a 10-year maintenance cycle for the streets, which we currently utilize, has a budget impact of around $7,000 annually. So not a, not a big addition to the budget. So with that, we are recommending approval, given the fact that it's well maintained. You know, there's no major issues that would have to be addressed. The entire subdivision does receive all of the standard city services, and they have been paying property taxes since the 1990s. So we are recommending approval. Did want to note that Alan Johnson with the Board of Directors is here today to answer any specific questions you might have. But again, staff is recommending approval of the agreement.
Miss Clinton check for potholes?
Yeah, I don't know if Clinton has walked it, but the street-
I will admit, I went to the town hall. That street, those streets are probably the best in town.
They are in really good shape. You can tell from the pictures, they have taken really good care of them.
So to be clear, from the beginning, they've been paying full city taxes for full city services. They've never requested a discount for taking care of their own streets.
That's correct.
Beyond being an age restricted community.
It was-
With frozen property values.
Okay.
Just saying.
There is that.
Clear.
One of the small things that's brought up at town.
spoken as the only councilperson who's under 65. Are you 65?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm not under 65. Quick question about utilities under the street. Anytime there's a water break or sewer break, we take care of that and they repair the street? Or do we repair the street?
So if it's utility related, if it's damage we cause from a city perspective, we will repair that. But the routine maintenance that have been, that has been done since the 1990s has been done by the HOA.
And that will continue?
No, so we would-
For utility?
We, we would take over normal maintenance responsibility of the streets, including repairs related to utility improvement.
That was my question.
Are they state check customers?
Uh, no, they're served by the city of Fredericksburg.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve this. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Thank you, Art.
All right, Alan?
Thank you.
We're done with you, unless you want to hang around and bask in our presence.
Well, thank you. We, we appreciate it. We appreciate it. This whole thing was prompted, of course, by several of our residents saying, well, we've been paying property taxes for 25 years that include roadway maintenance. Can't we get that roadway maintenance? So that was, that was the impetus for this whole thing, and I thank you for, for your consideration.
Okay. All right, item 8C is to discuss and provide direction on the Fredericksburg Food and Wine Fest event. Clinton?
Hey, Mayor Council, wanted to get this item on the agenda for two purposes. Primarily to get clarification from the council on postponing this event for 2024 and get a little bit of direction if, if that's the direction we want to go to start planning a, a little bit different event for 2025. This is something that different city councils have talked around for the last five years or so. And most recently during the budget process this year, this council discussed the event and trying to make it even better than it has been. So that's, that's really what we're after with this item, Mayor. This event started in 1991. The event that will happen on the 28th this month will be the 33rd event. And it started back in the days of peaches and antiques, you know? And, and the folks that, that started this, I don't believe had any idea that we would transition to 73 plus or minus wineries out in the county with another 50 or so on the way. And that being just a really big burning business. So this event has not necessarily grown in the eyes of some to, to match that wine industry that is happening here in the county. It has been a very successful event. It's been a city event all along. And there have been a lot of folks that have really poured their heart and soul into this every single year to make it what it is. It's been a successful event, no doubt. And it's been something we've been very proud of in terms of revenues and expenses. Our revenues just about equal expenses the last several years. So it's not anything that's really costing us. But I think there's a big opportunity and this has been discussed by, again, council members and others in the community to, an opportunity to improve this event beyond what it is. And I know that a few council members have been to similar events in other states. I might want to share some of their experiences there. But, but again, I just wanted clarification on not doing the event in 2024. It is in budget. We have budgeted about a $3,000 loss up next year. And then again, kick off the, maybe kick off the planning process for the 25 event. I think it was council, I remember Kirchner that, that mentioned, let's get through the budget process and start talking about food wine fest in October. So with that, Mayor, I'll open it up to council.
I know that some of the council members have some comments to make about this.
First of all, Krista, I've been corrected, they didn't make money last year. It's around 20,000, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Twenty, yeah. So if you put it all together, we didn't lose money, but we made a little bit of money. Of course, a lot of work for very little amount of money.
I think that we, as looking at it, your staff's eyes, we, we're showing that we're, we have a profit at 25 to 30,000 the last couple of years. But if you look into staff's time that's involved, it's not included in those numbers, that would, that would be the problem.
We do have a lot of staff involved in this event, which we haven't ever measured. I was there in 1991, so I've been there ever since. And there've been a number, number of others. But part of my deal is is that we see it constantly declining and, and profitability going down. So that's why I'm saying we've got to revamp this thing. We've got to do something. We have many new or local wineries now. And I really think that, appreciate the guys that helped us from way back. But we need to get the local stuff to.
First of all, I'd like to thank the organizer, Debbie, and all the people that have been involved in the past. They've done a great job with the, with the event. I was, had the opportunity to go to the Aspen Food and Wine Fest several years ago. And I was very impressed with their event. And that's been developed over years. And I came back and made the mistake or a comment that was in a council meeting that I, I felt like we needed to make our event better. And I was, that wasn't well received. And I probably should have stated it differently. But I, I think it is time that as our wine industry has grown in this area, not just Fredericksburg, but this area, we need to take a look at the Food and Wine Fest and really make it more reflective of, of the industry that we have. Give the wineries an opportunity to showcase some of their, their great wines they have. Create more opportunity for education. And showcase the food service that we have, food opportunities. And at the Aspen Food and Wine Fest, they had venues all over town and not just at one location. And it, it was a week-long event. I'm not saying we do anything like that. But I think we ought to take a serious look at it. And I think we need to get the local wineries involved, the local restaurant owners and chefs. Get them involved and really highlight the industry that we have here. We also have the new CBB director, he came from Grapevine. They do a huge Food and Wine Fest and they have 250,000 people show up over a weekend. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at all, but, but he does have the experience and he could be a great resource for us. So I, I currently back the idea of not having an event in 2024 and coming back with a new revised event in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree with that. I think there's great potential for this event. It, it's fun and it's neat now. I mean, right now tickets are $25 each. And if we were to increase that and offer some uplifted offerings, I guess. I want, I mean, maybe a workshop or several workshops and we can see if, if there are other people that are interested in having some input on this. But I think definitely working with the CBB, working with Flavory TX and what they're doing. I think looking at a potential venue change, I know that damage to market plots after Oktoberfest was very concerning to me. And we might have some other venues in town that could be better. And also the wine and food offerings, we have so many great spots here in Gillespie County alone. I would love to be able to limit it to Gillespie County businesses instead of farther reaching wineries. This is currently the practice.
I also support putting a pause on this for, probably for a couple of reasons. One is just anecdotally having gone to it, I, I don't see as many locals as I think that we could perhaps retool this for. We talked yesterday about potentially setting aside maybe one evening for locals. So that's one thought. The other part is the impact, as, as council member Kirchner talked about, on market plots as well. You know, it's a very, very busy season leading up to Christmas and we want that market plots to just sparkle at Christmas time. The other part in talking to one of the board members is she made a recommendation because October is so incredibly busy, do we look at a slower month in the calendar year? Whether it's January, June, August, I don't want to predict what that is yet. I'm just suggesting looking at a slower traffic month, that we can do a much higher quality and build on the amazing success from the past and provide an offering that's really truly unique in Fredericksburg.
All right, does someone want to make a motion about the, what's been discussed? With regard to suspending for next year, coming back with a day of planning 25?
I'll move this for 2024 with the plan of revamping the event 2025.
Second, motion second to suspend for next year with the, with the plan for engaging in 2025. Clinton, does this have any budget implications that we need to be considered?
No, sir, not, not at this point. And if, if it does, we'll bring that back in a year. Like I said, right now, we, we just budget it.
So it means we have $3,000 more to spend in the budget?
Potentially, yes. Yes, sir.
All right.
Something I, I would recommend and maybe Clinton do is we really need to appoint and get a committee together working on that.
Correct. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? All right, thank you. City manager's report.
Okay, Mayor, City Council, this is my monthly update. And I will get, give Cody a second to pull up my screen here. As we've talked about this in the past, this is something that we're going to continue to do on a monthly basis. Here we go. I'll see how this shows up. I'd turned off a, a number of slides this morning. So there may, I may skip over some of this information. Again, this is information that we provide to the public and we're going to continue to do this on a monthly basis. This is largely what I talked about during our town hall meeting the other day. Drew from this information. I'll also be talking about it at coffee tomorrow. So this information seems to be very well received by all of our audiences. Okay, so just generally, we'll be talking about development, what's happening in the development world. I don't have any projects to highlight today in particular. Give a financial update and then I'll have a miscellaneous update. Okay. Just an update on the schedule for the comprehensive plan. And Anna, do you want to highlight anything in particular here?
Yeah, so we, staff is now reviewing the first draft of the comp plan. Those were due to me today. So we'll see how many staff comments we get and then we'll send that back to Hafen Associates. And then the next draft will go out to the advisory committee and start that process. We anticipate adoption in January. So in the meantime, we'll schedule a joint meeting with you and planning and zoning as we go through the formal approval process and, and take citizen input on that. So a little bit more to come on the details on how we're going to get that feedback. It is a 100-page document. And obviously, a lot of people aren't willing to sit down and, and go through 100 pages, but to, to get the highlights. Obviously, trails are important, connectivity, and then we've got this separate parks plan. Parks Department has already made their reviews and edits to the Parks Master Plan and that's back to half for those edits. But they'll go a slightly different process with the CPAC, but come to you for final adoption at the same time, comp plan and parks master plan. So we'll be reaching out for, for dates for joint meeting with planning and zoning.
And as we look at the comprehensive plan, we're, we're looking at some potential ordinance amendments regarding development and maybe some requirements for water conservation measures to be included. Chris and I were talking just a little bit about how some of that might be incorporated into an amended ordinance we bring to the council, water conservation ordinance at first year, flow, flow fixtures, that sort of thing. Okay, just to give you an idea of development activity, site plan, zoning, and Platts activity from 2020 to date. Again, as we will see in the next couple of slides, you see a lot of activity in that 2021, 2022 timeframe. We're getting back to more normal levels with activity in 2023. We might be just a little bit below normal recently. We haven't had a lot of activity in the development world, not as much as today. New commercial construction permits, you can see this has been up and down. But we're at, we're at 14 currently, which generally represents the average in terms of permits, annual permits. Okay, I'm going to skip these slides and go right to single-family residential permits. Let me actually go to the next slide first. So we have currently 1,228 single-family residential lots available for construction on the ground. Of those 1,228, this is what the number of permits look like. And again, going back to the 2016, 2016 timeframe, we had 69 that year. We're projecting 85. So we've seen just a little bit of more activity. I think we had 50-something as our projected number for this year. But again, coming back to a little bit more norm level on the single-family residential permit side from the last couple of years of activity where we saw a pretty large increase.
Clinton, I would just mention that, that anticipate, that projected of 85, that is pretty much because of the, the Lennar development off of South Creek and Friendship. They have started pulling permits. They anticipate, anticipate pulling five- They anticipate, anticipate pooling five every two weeks, so they're moving ahead with phase one.
Thank you for that, Anna. So multifamily. What do we look like, uh, on the multifamily side? Apartments, condos, uh, recently completed 70 units and this number is going up just a little bit from last time. I think we had 525, uh, 583 under construction currently. So you see a lot of this going on. Friendship Lane, uh, 16 North. In fact, at one of our town halls, um, one of the residents mentioned it just seems like they're getting claustrophobic driving down 16 because of these large buildings coming out of town. So a lot of activity. 629 approved for construction for a total of 1,282, um, that are either recently completed under construction or approved for construction. Uh, this number is important when you compare that to the, the total number of apartment units that were available in 2019, just a little bit over 800 with 100% occupancy. And we really hadn't added that many until just last year, we really started seeing construction. So a lot of activity on multifamily side. Chris, is there anything you want to highlight on public work specifically in terms of projects?
Not necessarily. The water line project, it's, uh, it's wrapped up for the most part, other than just cleanup and pavement repairs. Our water, uh, pumpage has went down some with the weather, with a little bit of rain we've gotten. Off-ramp, we've seen a little bit of recharge just because our decreased in, in daily, um, pumpage, but you know, pretty, pretty consistent as far as what we see this time of year. So as far as other projects, uh, nothing else to add.
Sorry, so that was finished?
Uh, it's almost finished. They're just cleaning, just a little bit of cleanup and then the finishing of, of the pavement, but the wat, new water line is in service. Yes, sir.
Okay, so taking a look at the, uh, parks, uh, October calendar, of course, we did have, uh, Oktoberfest followed by Skeet Art Festival, Best Fest coming up, uh, this weekend and finally the, uh, Food Wine Fest on the 28th. Also wanted to remind everyone on Halloween, Fire EMS Open House, always a lot of fun for the kids. Okay, skipping forward to finance and sales tax, and this is a little bit different looking, looking graphic, uh, than we had last time. Uh, we learned a few things at TML. I've asked Krista to back up a little bit and continue to provide the slide that shows the five-year trend of sales tax month by month. So we'll see that again next month, but this will just give you an idea again how sales tax has grown, uh, from 2020, 2021, uh, through our projected, uh, 23, 24 budget. Also wanted to mention that we just got, uh, information from Tim that I passed along to the council for August. Uh, sales tax receipts, we were down about 2%, 2.3%, I think in the city, and we're still up just a little bit over 4% compared to last year, year-to-date. So I'll continue to, uh, show this information as we're tracking that, that sales tax number month by month. Okay, getting into the electric revenue and consumption, of course, we did have a very hot summer, uh, 26 days in August, over 100 degrees. So our revenues are doing very well, a little bit over budget in terms of, uh, total revenues for the electric department. Similarly, on the water side, we, we actually got a lot closer than we had originally anticipated on the water side. Uh, we did go into stage four, uh, April 1st, but we did see that usage start to pick up in the late July, August timeframe. So as Chris mentioned, we hasn't, haven't had a lot of rainfall, just a little tidbit, uh, on the recharge of the aquifer. Really, and I mentioned this yesterday, uh, to Randy and the mayor, our window, uh, for rain, where we would see that recharge, where we see that aquifers really start to pick up, um, on, on the levels in the springtime is that July, August, September timeframe. Uh, it takes about 10 months to really see that recharge, uh, in our aquifer, the aquifers that are not directly adjacent to the Port Nellis River. So we missed that window, so it'll be interesting to see, although our well levels are up just a little bit, Chris reported yesterday, about 10 feet, uh, in one of our wellfields. So taking a look at, uh, property tax, you can see again here the increase in total collections from 2020 through the, the, um, the FY 2023 year-to-date actuals. And that's broken down into the maintenance and operations and then the interest in sinking side, the, the, uh, orange column up there. Again, we, we don't have a lot of debt, uh, so that, that eye in that side of the equation is very low. Any questions, uh, about finance? Any questions about sales tax? Anything you would like to see that you're not seeing currently?
Just real quickly, what's, what's the lag time before we receive the month prior? Does it take us full 30 days to three months? What's the visibility?
Not asked.
On sales tax specifically?
Yeah, sales tax specifically, how, what's the lag?
Usually about, um, mid-month, we receive the sales tax numbers for two months prior.
Okay, Police Department gives you a snapshot of activity from January through September. Uh, it's a very nice graph that shows the total number of calls. It also shows the average time on a call, the heavy line, and then the dashed line is the average response time. So you can see we're picking up just a little bit, bit when we get into the high festival and visitation season. That's normal for that.
Has that increased with the, uh, now the code enforcement on weekends?
It has increased and in fact, uh, the next couple of slides here, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about code enforcement specifically and you can see how that's picked up. And I might turn to Chief. Uh, Chief, this particular slide right here, is this all PD activity or just code?
This slide here is, is just patrol.
Just patrol. Gotcha. So again, when you... I have a question for the Chief, good. When we look at, uh, September, uh, data and when you look at again from January, you can see the, the number of warnings versus citations that are actually... So about 10% roughly, um, of the, the actual, um, total are actual citations that go through municipal board.
Chief, I have a question. We received a, um, complaint over the last few days, uh, from a person who's visiting. And it had to do with, um, truck traffic being rude and impatient with regard to, um, I'm talking about big trucks that have to go through town with, uh, the number of people who cross the streets and, and so forth. From your perspective, is that an issue? Um, is there, have you ever heard of many dangerous kind of situations created? This person was saying that, um, of course, it was probably October weekend, I mean Oktoberfest. And you know, it took a lot of time to get people across the streets at the, at the light change. And, uh, I know you're going to have impatient truck drivers go through and they were trying to turn apparently, turn, and so forth. You ever hear about that? Is that an issue?
Every so once in a while, we, we hear about that, um, just with this year, volume of pedestrians and vehicles, but very, very seldom. I don't consider that an issue.
In no instance. I mean, people are not being hurt or whatever, because this person was very adamant that we are just toying with fate and...
Not, not by large, semi-truck traffic.
Okay, I appreciate that perspective.
If I can get the Chief to stay up there, I wanted to, uh, show you this slide right here. And this is the, uh, the, the total number of arrests again since January, uh, through September. Uh, the Chief sent out a stat, um, the week of Oktoberfest weekend. If you look at the totals here in September, uh, the 29, um, individuals booked and then 33 total charges, uh, just in that one week through the Oktoberfest weekend, we had 21 arrests and 17 over the weekend.
How are we to interpret this? This is good.
Well, again, if you look at the month totals for September, the 29 and 33, we had 21 arrests in one, in that one week in October.
Really? What was going on?
A lot of activity. I'm not trying to cast any shade on that event. I'm just telling you, it's...
I'm trying to be, uh, blood-hearted with, since we've spent so much time on STR.
But we are, but we are down from the, uh, July, August timeframe. And I think I made the comment last time, I think people are just upset that it was so hot and dry.
People are mad.
But according to Randy's numbers, our population went from 12 to 34,000.
Right, so, so that's natural.
Just to update everybody, the Mayor and I, including, did meet with Oktoberfest people and they're concerned too that the numbers are big and we can't handle it. So it's not, everybody, we're aware of it and the Oktoberfest group is aware of it and they're working on it and they've done a lot of wonderful things in this community.
Completely agree. Okay. Moving on to code enforcement activity specifically. And you can see here again, uh, data trending from January through September where the total activity in September, 151, and I think that's largely due to the fact that we've cooled off and we don't have as many watering violations. That was one of our, um, highest number of violations. Uh, and again, 45 of those, 151, um, had to do specifically with short-term rentals, which again, we see that roughly 30% on average of the, the total, um, code enforcement violations. So since January, about 1,400, little over 1,000 of those were on STR. Looking at the, the top violations, as you would expect, uh, and a lot of these are, you know, what, what we've been, uh, talking about as minor violations. A solid waste being, uh, the number one, uh, trash cans overflowing, uh, trash cans left out, that sort of thing. And then watering violations, which that watering violations line will continue to go down. Okay, I'm going to skip ahead just a little bit here. Okay. Any questions about PD at this point? I get right into Fire EMS. So again, when we look at the next couple of slides, you can see the, uh, the daily activity here. We'll show you the heat map, uh, coming up in just a little bit, but the average number of calls per day is 12. That's actually down just a little bit, but we see that range from seven in a day up to 19 per day. When you look at the incidents per month, you can see, uh, the line right now, we're trending up just a little bit again, getting into that holiday season, a lot more visitors. Um, that line will probably be up just a little bit, a lot more activity. So where we see a maximum, uh, month of 374 back in January, again, another pretty busy month, um, pretty close to that, um, last month. When you look at the incident alarm types, the EMS on duty, again, makes up the majority of this, all the way down to the fourth and fifth out. When those numbers start getting a little bit higher is when we really start looking at adding more staff, adding another ambulance, that, that sort of thing. We've talked about this, um, transfer number, how it has gone up with the transition to the new hospital ownership, the, um, what, what we heard is that number should go down. We're starting to see that go down just a little bit now, so we'll continue to watch that trend. Hopefully that will continue to, to decrease. Brush fire season. Um, I'm going to say we dodged a little bit of a bullet this year. I think we probably learned a lot of lessons from last year. Um, we did see a little bit of an uptick in brush fires. Luckily none of those got out of control. We had a few controlled burns, you can see for the, if not that total, just a little bit. But we were able to keep that very low. Jumping into the heat map here, and again, as we've talked about before, when you look at that weekend activity, Friday through Sunday, that's when our visitors are in town. That's when we see a lot more activity, um, compared to your... This will give you an idea right here, what the distribution of calls, both Fire EMS looks like, the blue or EMS, the red or Fire. Most of those calls, probably 80% of those in town, about 20% outside. Quite a few out the 290 East Corridor on the EMS side. And again, a heat map showing the concentration of those. The very dark red right there is the, the hospital. Open positions in the city, we currently have 11. We've been able to fill five the last time I gave this report. We had 16, um, the month before that, we had 18, so we're continuing to fill these open positions. You can see from Finance Department, Fire EMS, we continue to have the two positions open, uh, three police officers. I think that number may have moved one. And the Water Department, a crew chief and master electrician. We continue to look for a staff engineer, uh, any, any of those professional positions, I can tell you. Uh, and we talked about this at TML with other cities and consultants. Uh, the engineers are just not there. We heard a lot of them are going into real estate, real estate development, so taking advantage of, uh, opportunities like that. But we have had, I think, one application in the last six, eight months, uh, on that particular position. Uh, Street Department, Heavy Equipment Specialist, and finally, uh, Development Services, our Senior Planner, Historic Preservation Officer. Anna, do we have an update on that particular position?
Offer made, waiting.
Offer made?
Yeah.
So that one is pending and these are the recently filled positions. Okay, finally, I wanted to end with...
About police officers.
I might get, uh, Chief to talk just a little bit about, about that.
Sorry, what was your question?
Openings in the Police Department, current openings in the Police Department.
We have four current openings. Um, and then as the previous slide showed, we have, um, one in the academy, one that just graduated academy, started field training, and three others in field training right now. So, um, with, with all those graduates, cadets, um, we still have four openings. We're still hiring for four patrol officers.
Okay, finally, on the civic engagement side, and this is a slide that we added. Uh, as Emily mentioned, we did have a, a town hall, uh, October 12th. Uh, it was a combination of areas. We had 20 residents, uh, four council members and eight staff showed up. There was a comment made about how much staff support we had there and after hours, how much that, that means to folks. So, uh, a lot of short-term rental, uh, issues, a lot of those neighborhoods south of Main Street, off of Mylum Street. That is a fairly intensive short-term rental, uh, area. Uh, there were some concerns about development and how that related to water issues. A lot of the development off of Ostoke, a lot of the residents from that area, um, making comments and the growing traffic issues, a lot of traffic along Mylum Street, um, more traffic along Ostoke and Live Oak right there. Uh, so we took a lot of notes. I think there are probably a few of those issues that we can probably, uh, address really quickly, but, uh... but, uh, a lot of good input from the, the public, it wasn't all bad. Again, as we're moving through the city, we're able to address issues in every one of those particular areas. Give a.
Just an observation, we didn't discuss chickens or ducks this time.
That's correct, so, uh, we've gone from chickens and ducks to traffic, to short-term rentals, to, you know, nothing's, nothing's off the table, and it's always very interesting. Uh, coffee with the city manager coming up tomorrow at eight, for those of you that, uh, make that regularly. Uh, I look forward to seeing you there tomorrow, for those of you that have never been, look forward to seeing you out there. And that includes my report.
Questions? Thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
Items for future agendas? Obviously, we'll need to add next, next month's. Rachel, we just don't want you to get used to not being here. By the way, thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Let me get to that list right quick. Okay, so coming up November seventh, uh, of course, we will have the short-term rental, uh, ordinance back on the agenda. We have a water and sewer main replacement, construction contract, Chris. Uh, we have another amendment to the L C R A electric easement, is that similar to the ones we've considered before, Chris?
Uh, the last ones we've considered have to deal with, uh, allowing a third-party fiber optic, uh, company to come in and, and utilize dark fiber. Uh, this particular one actually has to deal with, um, expansion of an existing L C R A electric easement, uh, through a detention pond over on, uh, off of Wellness Court. Very simple thing, it's part of their substation, uh, that they're doing, called Peach Substation off of Post Oak. Uh, but this particular area is, is not usable, developable property, it's a current detention pond, but they just need a little wider easement, uh, for the work they're doing as part of that electrical upgrade. So slightly different than the last two that we brought before council.
And then finally, consideration of approval of our, uh, new sidewalk construction contract, it's, uh, time for that, that contract to.
Chris, at what level are we, is this contract, is it fifty, hundred?
One fifty.
One fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Great, thank you. Anything to add? Take off? Thank you.
All right. Are we there?
We are, I move we adjourn.
Second. I don't need a motion in second, but I'll take it, no. We've, we've fussed about that, I, I didn't know until, uh, the other day that, that the mayor could adjourn as the president, but, um, I have people that like to make the motion, so I can act, right? Okay, I have a motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good day.